I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Okay, first thing on the agenda is public hearing for change of ownership to the Countryside Pub. Okay, she will be calling in. And do we have the owner of the Countryside Pub on?
Michelle Terry.
I'm sorry, I was telling everything without a mic on. Can you unmute your speaker?
I did mute my speakers.
Okay, so I opened up the meeting at 6:02, we had the pledge of allegiance. The first thing on our agenda is the public hearing for the change of ownership to the Countryside Pub. And do we have the owner to the Countryside Pub on here, resume? You gotta unmute your mic. Can you say it, ma'am?
Yes, this is Michelle Terry.
Okay, hi, Michelle.
Hi.
Okay, so we're just holding a public hearing for this to change the ownership of the pub? And did you purchase the pub?
No.
From the owner?
No, I owned the pub since 2007, but my mom passed away, which made me the sole owner.
Okay.
And the HCC wanted the package done because that essentially changes the ownership percentages.
Okay, alright, so did you wanna speak about the pub at all, or anything like that?
I've been an owner since 2007. I've been active in all of the backend paperwork. My mom ran the operations since 2007. When she passed away in June 5th of 2021, I became 100% owner. And I was told that I needed to be appointed as the manager. Even though I was an owner, I wasn't elected, I didn't opt to be the manager back in 2007. And now I guess I have to go through that process. I was investigated back then, and I did do the full investigation. I just wasn't, I didn't write "manager" down, got done on my obligation.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Anybody from the public have any questions? No? So we just gotta vote to make her the manager? Is that what we're doing, Karen? So get a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'm gonna mute.
I'll make a motion to accept Michelle Terry as the manager of Countryside Pub.
Second?
Nope. Okay, get a second.
Get a second.
Second?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay, the motion passes. And you're all set?
Okay, I did wanna just point out that I'm selling the pub, and the buyer wanted to attend this meeting, so she's there just to kind of see the process because after this is done, she needs to adjourn her application for that sale.
Okay.
It might be a couple months down the road, okay?
And she is in the meeting, she's sitting here in front of us. She's looking very eager, so.
Okay, well, thank you, is there anything else I need to do right now?
No, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you, thank you, I appreciate your help.
You have a good weekend, enjoy the snow. Alright, so you're the new owner, or you're gonna be?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll probably become in front of us here soon.
Hopefully.
Very good, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I will now send the paperwork over to the board, and they will, perfect, okay? And that's the last part that she has to do.
Okay, great, well, hopefully I'll be back here soon, then.
Good luck, stick around for the rest of the meeting if you wanted to.
I'd love to, but have a good night.
You too. Okay, so moving on, our next discussion is on the, am I muted? No, okay, next discussion is the whiteboard and monitor for the Selectmen's Meeting Room. This is one of the things we're talking about because we have issues with the social media and getting everything out there and having to move back and forth like we're having tonight with being able to see and the audience being able to see who we're talking to. So we're looking at, we're looking at a whiteboard. Whiteboards are very expensive, and in research, we could actually get a flat-screen TV, hook it up to a computer, and use that as a monitor. So we can basically get the same thing out of it for a lot cheaper. And we can have multipurposes, we could put other things on there, videos if we need to play a video in the meeting room, and anything else we can do in here to help expand it. It would be paid with ARPA funds as part of expanding our social media and getting out there to the public a little more. So it wouldn't be purchased with town funds or anything like that. Did anybody wanna speak a little more on that?
I'll just say I was looking into an alternative grant maybe, but I think the process is long, so it wouldn't be till the fall, and you know, I think we need this now because we're having, it's technically just not a great solution with these laptops and everything, so.
No.
I'm in favor of moving ahead.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I completely agree, and I support the idea of trying to do the best for Zoom in the meetings. I suggest that we look into a, at least 65-inch TV that we can put on the wall, we'll plug it to one of our computers. I am also recommending a camera, speaker, microphone.
Yep, that's gonna be on the next part.
Okay, so move on.
So, and we're looking at this, purchasing it for around, what is it, $500 for the TV, a 65-inch TV?
Yeah, basically, what the cost of a whiteboard, it's about $1,600, $1,800. The cost for the, for the TV, the microphone, the camera, and the speaker, which is about the same price, about $1,500, $1,600.
But the TV alone right now is, is under $500, around $500?
Around $500.
For the TV, for that, and then that would allow WCAT 12 to also pan right onto that and focus the camera onto that.
That camera, that's what he said, he will aim that camera to the monitor and.
Okay, so I'm good with that, if we wanna vote to get the TV?
I'll make a motion to purchase a monitor for the Selectmen's Meeting Room, for the purpose of remote meetings.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes, we'll purchase that item. The next thing is video and audio streaming device for the Selectmen's Meeting Room. Again, the laptops, we're having issues with moving them around. We're trying to do the best we can with these. Derek, you researched the streaming devices that would allow us to do this better? Do you wanna explain that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so basically what it is, it's.
Yeah, let me turn you in here.
I'm gonna use this as a sample, but basically it is, it's a device who has a speaker, who has a 360-degree microphone, and a 360-degree camera, which it plugs into one of our computers. But that allows us, is that everybody who speaks in the room, the camera is gonna pick up and zoom into that person so we can focus on what they're saying and we can hear. If somebody in the public starts speaking, automatically the camera's gonna zoom into that person, so we will have the camera, speaker, microphone right in the middle. And that way, we avoid all this thing about echo and moving the cameras, moving the computers around and all that. So it's, it's actually very, very, a very good tool for this scenario where we have people around the table, basically.
And this could, this could be used for any of the meetings within town?
Any meetings.
Because it's gonna be town property, so any, any meetings, Planning Board, Board of Health, anybody that wants to use it, it would be available to them to hold their meetings with.
Yeah, basically because the problem is, we are in a conference room, so a computer is supposed to have you in front of you, so it's gonna try to noise cancellation everything that's around or in front to allow only the speaker, but here, everybody's talking, everybody's saying, so it's hard to work around. This tool allows us to have our meetings either in a small room, in a big room, at the gym, everywhere, without any problems.
Very good. And Rich, did you have anything?
So, two things, does, do you know, Derek?
I'm gonna mute my mic.
Do you know, Derek, does it have a thing for, you know, on the bottom, that socket for like a real tripod?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes, it does, you can put it on a tripod, anywhere you want.
Okay, because it might, we might wanna lift it higher than like the dash.
You muted. Can you repeat?
I just wanted, this is why we need this equipment. I just wanted to know if it had a adapter on the bottom for like a real camera tripod?
Yes, it does, it has that purpose.
My second question was, I would say with the speaker-camera device, we'd probably wanna have a checkout process, so you know, like if Planning's gonna use that one evening, then the secretary can check it out from the Selectmen, just so it doesn't lock.
Just like a room, you know, when you, you know, you wanna save the room for a meeting.
Yeah, and then that board is responsible for the camera for that evening or for that meeting, and then they gotta return it.
Camera works with Zoom and any other computer software, whatever you wanna use for conferencing.
Okay.
Alright, sounds good. Are you on a motion? If you guys wanna do a motion, unless anybody from the public has any questions about it. Does anybody have any questions about the, the audio and video streaming device for the Selectmen's Room to help out with our streaming? I see a lot of people getting more involved with Zoom. This would actually help us a little bit to get the message out there for everybody. So if anybody has any questions, put your hands up. No?
Nope.
Okay, so, alright, get a motion?
Here, I'll do this. So I'll make a motion to purchase a video/audio streaming device for the Selectmen's Room.
Second?
Second?
Mr. Belize seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote was unanimous, the motion passes, we'll order that item. Thank you very much. Okay, now, Town Administrative Pre-Selection Committee. Did we get anybody that was interested through the town?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I sent out our form through social media, and we got three legit responses.
Okay.
So if you give me a few seconds, I'll read the names of them.
If you can read them off. I would also, I don't know how you guys feel, but I would suggest that we utilize the department heads again?
Yes.
For the towns portion, and whoever we have for residents to get involved with the board. This way, we have the town and their subject matter experts making sure that we hire the right person for this, and we get the town's perspective from the residents that are interested in doing this also. And Mr. Belize is looking for the residents that we have on here.
We found it, so we have, let me zoom into this so you can see it.
Are you, I'm switching over here so you can see it.
So we have these submissions actually for James McKeon, Jean Howard, Daniel Pibodeau, sorry for my accent, and Joshua Regan.
Okay.
They fill out the information, it has, it has all the, their information, why they wanna do it, their email address, and a way to contact them. So these are volunteers that contacted us through social media to participate on this.
Okay, so we have four of them?
Four, yep.
Alright, and then I think we could have our same department heads. Are you guys chiefs, you guys good with that?
Sure.
So we'll have the same department heads, and those four individuals also. Did we get anybody else through the Selectmen's email? No? No? Okay. So if we can have them get in contact with each other, and let me see the names again. So we'll have James McKeon, Jean Howard, Daniel Pibodeau, and Joshua Regan on the Pre-Selection Committee along with the department heads to be a part of the Pre-Selection Committee for the Town Administrative.
Good.
You guys good with that?
Yes, sir.
When does that committee meet?
Well, we're gonna give them the stuff as of the end of the month, so we got, what is it, Monday? So at Monday, we'll pull all the resumes and give them to the Pre-Selection Committee. Chief, if you guys can organize that?
Yeah, are we still running off of the, because we, okay, so we need to establish a chairman and start all the, okay.
Just wanted to clarify, okay. Yeah, it's a new board, this is not an ongoing thing, this is one-time deal, so you guys are a new board again, and you know all the rules.
Yeah, I believe last time, I think Nancy put the initial email out to everybody, and then we went from there and had a first meeting and selected a chairman, and we'll do that again.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'd say do that as soon as possible so you're ready when stuff comes.
Yeah, I think we gave them a week to review the resumes, and then we had a meeting right after that.
Yeah, because we're looking at mid.
Well, we don't have a meeting on the 3rd, so we have a meeting on the 10th.
Right.
So you guys can, they can give it back to you on the 10th, and then you can call.
And right now, last time I checked, I seen, you know, 19 of them in Indy, and did you get any? One, you got one? Okay, so we're looking at 20 or so applicants for the Town Administrator position. So once, once that closes on the 31st, we'll get you those, and you can start your committee.
We're good, right?
Any questions about the Pre-Selection Committee? Did anybody in the public have any questions about it? Would anybody like to talk about it? Anything? Would anybody like to be a volunteer on it? No hands up, no volunteers?
No.
Okay, alright, moving on. So municipal building for public access. You know, it's getting to the point where we're getting past this, the loop of COVID right now, where everybody's pretty much has gotten it, and there's still cases going on, but you know, we gotta open up at some point again for public access to allow residents to be able to do business within the town. I think it's, it's time where we did say, the end of the month, we would either open up, or we're gonna have to decide if we're gonna keep it closed for a little longer. You know, I know the Board of Health made a recommendation to keep it closed. They would also like to see all town buildings closed for public access, and mask mandate for all town buildings. That came from the Board of Health. I, I don't know if there's, you know, the only building that the public's really asking, accessing, is the municipal building. And we've had a mask mandate for anybody coming in the building, as you can see, we're all wearing them. I don't like to wear masks. I think it takes away from my boyish good looks, but you know, we gotta do what we gotta do. I'd love to see the chief's face again, but you know, masks are preventing us from that. You know, I guess we could discuss this and talk about what you guys feel, if you have any questions or you wanna address anything. Rich, do you have anything? I'm gonna mute me, so you can do yours.
So I'll just say, if, you know, if the Board of Health wants to keep it locked down for a little bit longer, I'm fine with that, and I think masks should be worn inside. I would say, you know, maybe let's get to the middle of February and see where things are at, if that sounds okay? I mean, we've been through this before, so I don't know that it's a huge inconvenience, it is a pain, but you know, I think we can go a couple weeks longer without a lot of problems.
Derek, did you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna take the opportunity to say something about myself. I do follow COVID statistics and a lot, and as we can see, the numbers are coming down, but the deaths are going up, so I believe this is because too many home kids. So if you, if we're looking at the deaths are going up, but the cases are coming down, it's probably because of the home kids and not reporting. Being that said, you know, if I would work on this building, I will beg to keep it the way it is right now close. I think using masks is the best way, my kids have been using masks all the time, we've been using masks, and so far, so good. So for my thoughts on up here, I support what the Board of Health is saying, that I keep it closer a little bit more. I think it's in the goodwill for the safety of all our people that work here or that come here.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Anybody from the audience? Okay, does anybody? Anybody from the public have any comments or concerns about the opening of the municipal building for public access and wearing masks? If anybody has anything to say, please, please say it, if you have any concerns. Nobody? Crickets. Okay. So, you know, I think, I think maintaining it for a couple more weeks till the middle of February is fair.
Yeah.
I do believe we're gonna have to open it up eventually here. We can't keep things locked down forever. You know, people go to Walmart, they go all over the place, and you know, they, they seem to be fine. You know, someplace like the Senior Center. I know that the Senior Center is gonna remain closed for, I believe, February, till mid-February, maybe till the end of February. And that's because they asked that, and I support that, you know? They, they know best on how to handle their seniors, and apparently some of the seniors have tested positive for COVID, so they're just trying to remain a little more cautious with that so we can get past this hill of that we're going over right now. If you wanna do a motion, we can do a motion to, are you good till the mid-February, and then we'll revisit it?
Alright, so I'll make a motion to keep the Town Hall closed until possibly the 14th, to reevaluate on the 14th.
Second?
So we got a second from that, from Mr. Belize, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the motion passes unanimously, we'll revisit, opening up the municipal building for access from the public beyond, making appointments. On February 14th, we'll revisit the issue again, and there will be a mask mandate for the municipal building until that date, so we revisit it again, okay? So, alright, so moving on. Update on the police move. I was talking with Charles today, and Charles gave us good news, that they're moving forward. They have several contractors in line that they are hoping to begin work the first week of February to move forward with that. They talked to a generator installer and the electrician, and they're working together to install the generator and move forward with that. They're also looking at running the gas line up Pulaski Street to the new police department to get natural gas up there, which will help out with bills, because then we wouldn't have a propane bill that we have to provide, and you could have natural gas up there. So they're looking at doing with that. They are in conversation with Chris Dumphy because we have to do some improvements to the water lines going there, up Pulaski Street. And I know Chris Dumphy was looking at doing some upgrades to that street and some potential projects, so if there's a way we can put in the new water lines and run. So if there's a way we can put in the new water lines and run the gas line and resurface that road all at the same time would be great. And that would be great for the residents also, getting improved water lines hopefully up there too. But that's something we all have to work out with and work with Chris Dumphy and CMR PC and try to get these projects going. So, that's what I have so far on that. So it is moving forward. I would have loved to have been in there by now, but these things take time.
As long as there's progress, you know.
There is progress. We are moving forward. Chief, did you wanna say anything?
Uh, actually, you told a little bit more than what I knew. I did go down last Thursday when they met with a few of the contractors and spoke with the electric contractor and the general contractor, who was there with Charles and Tim. They didn't know about the generator. That guy was supposed to be there that day and he didn't show. So, you knew about that and they hadn't talked about that gas line, which, that'll be nice if they can, yeah, I believe it stops right at the building, right?
I think it travels, yeah, basically right, right towards the beginning part of Pulaski Street.
Yeah. I know, I know it's not far at all from the building.
The gas doesn't go up far on South Street, so it doesn't travel very far up the road.
Okay. So, so that project is moving forward. You know, there's still stuff that's moving and contractors that need to, you know, we're waiting on some contractors and hopefully we'll be getting some walls up and some stuff done in there fairly soon. They were a little worried about the contract, because in the contract we did have lockdown there that they will be completed by February 3rd with the project, but with the late start.
Was it February? Wasn't February 3rd.
Yeah, it's February 3rd.
I thought it was sixty days from when they signed.
Yeah, yeah. Tim called me up and he's like, "I'm really worried about this start time or this completion time. As far as I know, it was supposed to be done by February 3rd." I'm like, "I don't think that's possible, you know, we gotta pull permits and everything." And I know Charles is working with the contractors to start pulling permits with, you know, the building department, so that's in the process. And I'm sure Chief, you'll get in there and do your inspection too.
Yeah, yeah, once we get to that point, yeah, we'll take care of that.
All right. Did you have anything?
No.
Derek?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, we are crossing our fingers this happens as soon as possible. Any chances or objections for us to stop by and see how the progress is during the week?
No. Dave?
I think it's written in the contract that we can.
Yeah, Tim and Charles completely open with it. And once we get going, do you guys wanna, well, you guys, you have no problem with it?
Yeah, I really would like to...
I know the chief's been stopping in and checking on them and...
Have they started tracing?
I know they were just meeting, they met with the contractors last Thursday, so...
Okay, yeah, I wanna, more of us as a supervision, I wanna support them, 'cause, you know, they gotta trace, you know, and then make sure that everything's done according to the plans. So I would like to stop by and check.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yeah, I'm good with that. They are, which is good, is they are trying to hire local contractors for all this work. So, that will bring opportunities for our tradesmen within the town and the community to take part in, you know, doing the new police station. So that's definitely something good. They're definitely pushing for having, keeping it within the community, so. All right. If anybody has any questions from the public, please ask them. Put your hand up. No? No questions? All right. So that was it for the police move. Appointments for election workers. Information from the state and the list of appointments. Okay. Keeping the town single precinct.
We're still single precinct.
Yep. Right. So what do we need to do here?
Okay, well Nancy, Nancy just wanted you to see that we were still considered a single precinct and then also that we will be getting eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents back for the two elections that needs to go on. And then she need you to appoint the people on the last page.
Okay. So we're getting eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents to support the two elections. We are considered one precinct with Section A is Warren and Section B. Oh, no, wait. Yeah. Election personnel expenses. Okay, never mind. So we are one precinct.
Oh, it says polling place A, polling place B.
Yeah, polling place A, polling place B.
I think, yeah, the word precinct has been used in the past, so...
Yeah. Okay. We wanna appoint all these people? Did you wanna read them all or you want me to read them all?
Go ahead, you got the mic.
All right. Election officers. So I motion to appoint the election officers for polling place A. Kathleen A. Maness, Cynthia A. Baxter, Heather L. Bridges, Sylvia Cummings, Linda J. Cunningham, Kathy M. Duncan, Cheryl E. Gagnon, Drew C. King, Kathy C. Caprietz? Did I butcher that?
Kuprizak?
Kuprizak.
I don't know.
Barbara B. Larkin, Barbara J. Longren, Edward F. Longren, Tracy S. Mazhar, Donna Alpina, Carol Sanders Susville, Julie D. Badness, Karen M. Wilk, Leona A. Rubel, Linda L. Rubel. Do we wanna, that's for motion for polling place A. Get a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So polling place A has been appointed. Okay, for election officers for polling place B, Leo H...
So you're making a motion?
Oh, I'm doing a motion. Sorry. I'm not usually the one doing a motion. I'll do the motion. For election officers in polling place B, for Leo H. Asslin, Phyllis A. Dolan, Dolania?
Dolania?
Yeah, Dolania. Virginia M. Fleming, Sheila D. Franceski, Francescati? Sorry for butching some of these names. Elaine M. Gankorz, Barbara J. Hastings, Peter R. Hastings, Martha Louviskas, Patricia A. Morrison, Agnes E. Sadleth, Beverly A. Saltis, Dorothy A. Witasden. Okay? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Polling place B, workers are appointed. All right. Okay, that is done. Okay, moving on. The junior firefighters program. Chief Lavoy has heard back from KP Law and Insurance and he's gonna brief us on that. So I'm gonna turn the camera to him.
I have some very excited junior firefighters or potential junior firefighters. We've been working behind the scenes to get the program up and running and off the ground, working with the select board, town council, and now with our insurance company, Maya. We, I reached out, there was a concern from our town council that we needed to talk to insurance for any liability issues or any other legal issues that may come up for insurance purposes and coverage for health, health or injuries or anything. So I did reach out to our Maya rep. Karen was nice enough to pass that information on to me. I had a very nice conversation with her. It turns out specifically in our coverage, there is a, an area where it specifically discusses junior firefighters. So, and again, we said that in the beginning, this wasn't an unprecedented program. Other towns have done this and Maya is one of the insurance companies a lot of communities use and they do support that initiative. There is coverage just like there is for the call firefighters if they're functioning on scenes or anything. And again, these junior firefighters are gonna be limited to what they can and can't do. I mean, we're not gonna put them in burning buildings or anything like that. They're more of a supportive role for the department, getting us equipment, swapping things out, learning stuff. They will do training with us, you know, to some extent and everything, but basically we wanna keep them interested, keep them, get them trained and keep them, you know, moving forward until they're eighteen, they can join as regular members. So, from what I, everything I read and from what I, the conversation I had with the Maya representative, everything should be good to go. So I forwarded that to Karen with her email and information and I just kinda wanted a final approval from the board and, you know, KP Law that we are kinda good to go to move forward, if that's good with the board.
Well, thank you very much for that, Chief. I think the junior fire program is actually a very good program. I think Chief put it very eloquently that this is something that will help bring up some of our, some of our residents that are not quite to the age of being a firefighter yet, but show interest into the field and get them a little more interested in it. We are having a issue hiring in some of these positions and this would be an opportunity for them to get some experience and see if it's a career path they would like to do. I support the program. I think it's a great program.
Yeah.
Anything we can do for our residents and help out our fire department in some of these situations, along with helping out the residents, get a good start, I think it's a good thing. So, do you have any questions?
No, sir, I, well, if, if I have a comment, I completely support this, this type of approved.
Okay. So, when do signups start and how do people, how do kids sign up?
So, anyone that's over the age of sixteen can, can join this program. We plan on having it all up and running in the near future. Our goal was for March 1st, to get all the kind of paperwork done on it and everything and have a meeting with the parents and prospective, you know, members. So, our plan is to, you know, anyone that's interested and would like to contact us, you can contact us, the fire department, reach out on our Facebook page, that's totally fine too. We do have some members, the members that we currently have that wanna join are already in our program up at Quabog, so that's where the whole conversation started coming from, but that doesn't mean that we won't take people outside that program. So if anybody has interest and isn't currently enrolled in that program, we can certainly look at them and take them on too. There'll be an application process, paperwork to go along with that. There is some prerequisite stuff that we need to, you know, get taken care of and we need to have a meeting with, with the parental guardians to make sure everybody's on the same page of what the responsibilities are, exactly what they can and can't respond to and what roles they will play. So, as soon as we get that all figured out, our goal is to, you know, get the program live like March 1st. So that's what we're looking at right now.
Okay, cool.
So we gotta take a vote on this, whether to approve it or not?
I'll make a motion to approve the junior firefighting program.
Okay, seconded?
Second.
Mr. Belize, seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote was unanimous. It passes. The chief has authority to go forward with the junior firefighter program.
Excellent.
If anybody has any questions about the junior firefighter program, please reach out to Chief Lavoy and the fire department and they will help you out.
Thank you very much for the support.
You're welcome. Okay. Did anybody else in the audience have any questions about the junior firefighter program at all or interested in it? No? Okay, moving on. So warrants and bills. I'm gonna shut my mic off.
Please, I can speak. Come on. Okay. All right, I make a motion to approve the following warrants and bills. Warrant number sixty-two, payroll forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents. Warrant sixty-three for vendor, seventy-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. And the following bills, Miracle O'Connell, ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Modern Pest Services for January, eighty dollars. Calco for two hundred and thirty-five dollars and eight cents. Mass Labor Law Posters Services, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. WB Mason, forty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Amazon for Clorox Pro Cleaning Units, four of them, for four hundred and ten dollars and twenty-seven cents. MIIA Property Insurance, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Fountain and Sons Construction Company for boarding up a couple houses, eleven thousand dollars. Bay Path Tuition Assessment, eight thousand, sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. That's my motion, I need a second.
Oh, one question. The Mass Labor Law Posters, didn't we vote for those last time?
We voted to get them, now we voted to pay them.
Oh, okay, all right. All right. All right, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. The warrants and bills will be paid. Okay. So, next thing on the agenda is the minutes. Approved December 9th, 30th, January 6th for the one o'clock session and the six o'clock session.
I make a motion to approve all those minutes, December 9th, 30th, January 6th, one and six o'clock. Second?
Okay. It was seconded by Mr. Belize. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. The minutes are approved.
You should have...
It passed unanimously.
Unmute.
I think everybody heard me through you, right?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I heard me going on that one too. If anybody didn't hear me, please tell me. We voted on the minutes and approved them. It was voted unanimously and seconded by Mr. Belize. Okay? All right. So we're going on to old business. Okay, do you have any old business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so, so speaking of the red dot alarm, we, we started installing on the schools and we were in test mode, but the nurse at the elementary school wanted to throw a real one, so she sent an alert. Fortunately, Officer Generally, he picked up and they found out they needed an ambulance. So immediately I proceeded to close the loop and made it live. At least that school is live. I'm gonna make live the high school and Westbrook Elementary School this next week. And then after that, I'll make the town hall.
Like you actually needed any ambulance?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the alert went out from the school nurse and we both got it. Both of us.
Maybe we can purchase some speed limit signs and talk to the guys and highway where they can get...
We can go through the highway for any kind of signs in town.
And maybe we could use that money to get more signs.
Yeah, we have to look at that for how it was put in, because it was voted for the purchase of those signs.
Oh, yeah.
So, we might not be able to use that. That might have to go back to the general fund and...
That's okay. I'm just saying, yeah, I'm happy that we can get them and...
Very good. Yeah, we can get with the highway department if they need more signs and probably identify some areas that, probably some speed signs need to be.
Great, thank you.
I do not.
No? Okay. No? Okay. Um, trying to think. Do we have any old business that I need to talk about?
I didn't see any.
Okay. I don't remember anything. Think we're pretty much caught up.
I did order the flag.
Okay, very good. Yeah, unfortunately, um, if you're looking, oh, let me see here. I gotta share my, where is it here? Virtual background. If you look at my virtual background, we notice that the flag actually has a stain on it and weren't happy about that, but we're getting a new flag and we'll probably decommission this flag, uh, with the Veterans Council.
Yeah.
You know, and get something. Unfortunately, somehow we got a stain on the flag at some point. Um, so that's good. We get that wooded. Um, I know Mr. Dusty's been working diligently through a lot of these areas. Um, let me close this. Okay. Um, we do have to address whether we- He asked about some of the projects that he had going on. I seen the big tarp he put over at the, the, um, the concrete-
All right. I'll make a motion to accept a reserve account transfer in the amount of eleven thousand dollars for the purposes of boarding up a couple houses, um, where the town had received-
Set up last week, I guess, right at the, on Friday or something like that, right?
Yes, we actually took what we had for planning board page and transformed that one because that one already had all the files with videos of, that we have transmitted from the planning board from meetings. And we changed the name to the official name of the warrant, the town of Warren.
Okay.
On Facebook. And that's the one that is, this phone is, is going live right now through that.
Okay.
Okay.
So like that Comcast notice, it might be easier just to put it on Facebook.
Yes.
As opposed to the website, which is fun to work with.
I, I have a question regarding the, the cable. Um, I saw a post on Facebook talking about, they were saying something like the, the town restricts the, so only Comcast can be the cable company in Warren. And, uh, the new contract is soon late, soon. Do they have to renew the contract, something like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So maybe, I don't know anything about it, so maybe we can-
Well, Comcast is the provider for the town. So, and we have a contract with Comcast and that's what we're in, going to be going into negotiations with. And that's why, um, WCAT 12 has been advertising those, uh, meetings that we're, we're starting the process of getting information to talk about what we would like to see for changes with Comcast. Um, and so we can represent the town's interests for the new contract coming. But that's still another year away, I believe.
Yeah.
But they start the process early to start that engagement, but it is coming up.